Good evening, thank you everyone for being here tonight. Just one quick bit of order. If you did come up to the mic to speak on an agenda item or on the open mic session for the general public, please fill out one of the forms in the back and hand that to Mr. Stewart. Can you come forward if you would please? Roll call real quickly, Counselor London.
Present.
Counselors Spivey.
Present.
Counselor Beard.
I couldn't wait until morning here.
Where is Wilson?
Present.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to go over the minutes?
I make a motion, the reading of the minutes be dispensed with some six counts. Remember, receive the copy, it may be approved as presented, this minute for viewing.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do I have approval of the current bill payment?
I make a motion for the approval of the current bills for payment in total of $648,004.18.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I've got a second on that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any professional consultant reports tonight? Mayor, any special announcements or report tonight?
Just very briefly, we have a couple of presentations tonight which we all look forward to, one from the police department, one from the senior center, and I'll let those who are leaving have maybe more information. I want to highlight just three things. Our Irondale move is moving ahead very well. We have a survey that is out currently. It's been out for about two weeks. It will run through the end of this month. We've already received about 250 responses, which is just a huge response from our residents on some questions that were on that survey. If you all, if you're the public, if you live in our Irondale and have not taken that survey yet, it is a survey monkey. You can go to the city Facebook or website page and click on the link and be able to take that along. It'll take you just two, three, four, five minutes at most to answer. It's very easy, but gives us some good information on next steps with our Irondale move. I had the privilege of attending three neighborhood association meetings over the past month or so, Holiday Gardens, Brookmont, and also Bangbridge Trace. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to resonate with all of those meetings. We have a number of developers and some of you, I know I've talked to some developers as well, perhaps all of you, a number of developers that are looking at sites in the area, which is good news for us. There's still a long ways to go, nothing to announce, but there are people who are looking actively in the Irondale area. I met with one group actually last week, a small manufacturing group looking at one of the facilities here off the road, and looks favorable. They've not signed the lease yet, so we'll see how they do as soon as they do, and we'll give more information on that. So, anyway, things are looking good, looking bright, and we're moving ahead.
Thank you. Under department headed reports, shall we start out? Chief, your presentation tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to do when I came here is get the police department really involved in the community, and I really wanted to come here and start a youth leadership academy. And so luckily, two weeks ago, we just had our very first youth leadership academy. I'd like to thank Ms. Vimble from the middle school. She was instrumental in helping me get this thing off the ground. I got with my two officers that teach at the school, one of them teaches classes at the high school and the other's a school resource officer, and sat down and discussed this idea with them, and we kind of put something together. So we ran it from Monday through Friday, eight to four every day, and we had a lot of speakers come in, talking to the kids. We took them on lots of field trips, went to motion industries here in Irondale. We went to civil rights museum, Barber's Motorsports, the Johnston County Courthouse, went up here to create a concept, Pucker Powder, toured that facility, Cross the Track, Steve Johnson Racing. We really had every day full of something. Lots of great speakers came in, spoke, talked to them every day. So we kept them really busy, and I think they really enjoyed it and got a lot out of it. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't, and we had lunch or breakfast for them every day, but we had some local sponsors here, Tricon Wear Solutions, Kirkwood by the River, Tower Homes, and the retreat at Mountain Brook. They sponsored the entire camp, so certainly without their help, it wouldn't have been hard to be as successful as we were. One thing I'd like to do, and I've asked, I don't know if any of them, if some more came in, I asked the kids that were in the youth leadership academies to come to city council tonight. At this time, if you're here, I'd like you to come forward, and I'd like you to introduce yourself to the council and to the audience. And let me just say, I don't know if they enjoyed this camp more or I enjoyed having them more. And the two officers that really taught it, unfortunately this week, they're working night too, so they're not here. But I tried to go on a lot of the field trips and come with a lot of the speakers. If you would, step up to the mic and tell them your name.
I'm Alex.
What's your last name?
Tell me your last name.
Okay. Kate Suits. Harley Yigley.
All right. And one thing, one of our speakers that came, Pastor George Whitlock, spoke to him one day when he came, and he actually showed him a book, a John Maxwell book, and talked to him about the book, and talked to him about, you know, it's a great book, and, you know, that they might want to get it and read it. So I purchased a book for each one of the students, and so I'm going to give you guys this book. And the name of the book is Sometimes You Win, Sometimes You Learn. And so one of the things we talked about during the whole week was, and it's really kind of strange how it worked out, it really worked out well, because several of the speakers, not seeing each other, not knowing what the other were talking about, at the end of the week, they pretty much all delivered the same message. And that same message was the big thing we kept going over and over. And one of y'all, tell me what it is.
I wish it was.
But the one thing we kept talking about, you never know what.
Oh, there's someone watching.
You never know, there's always somebody watching. So we went over that, over that. And one of the speakers talked to us about when he was 10 years old, Mr. Sparks, Cedric Sparks from City of Birmingham came and talked to him, and said that when he was 10 years old, someone saw him doing something right, and came back years later and hired him to do what he's doing today. And so we talked about that all week, to do the right thing, because you never know when somebody's watching. I want to give each one of y'all this book. I want to thank you all, and thank your parents for getting you there every day, and we certainly enjoyed it. All right.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Van Winkle, the program, and ongoing. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for showing up tonight. Appreciate your participation. Next, let's go ahead and sit down. Would you please, we've got a presentation from Senior Activities Center.
First of all, I want to thank the council and the mayor for supporting the senior center, not only the senior center, but then the senior Irondale pageant. We had about 100 people estimated to be there. We had, every year at site and bigger, great support, a lot of tickets, so pre-sale. My director, I want to thank Susan Park for supporting me and, you know, that has housed this senior center umbrella. You'll be getting a report from us about the money that you gave us to run this pageant. You'll be getting that report. I also want to thank our board queen, Gina, the first queen, Mary King. And my queen and pet, we are working on reaching Janice Lane. Lonnie Montgomery. Lonnie was our first runner-up, and the congeniality. And our winner is Janice Jackson. And she gave everyone else a being there in the mayor's stand and starting us off. And at this time, we have requested that Janice sing for y'all, so I'm going to cut it off here. I have newsletters from senior center, if anybody wants any, I'll leave that in the back. It's Janice's. If your permission, I'll turn this around so she can face the audience. It's kind of neat to go from the youth to the seniors. Kids, there's a lot in between there, okay? So fill that slot up well.
I just want to say something. It was an honor to be Miss Senior Irondale for 2016, and I passed the ton on, but something I want to tell you is, we've had three Miss Senior Irondales and two of them from Holiday Gardens.
She hates, look at his eyes. She waits, how they could attack. He's got everything a girl could want, man, oh man, what a prize. Oh, gee whiz, he's all the joy boy. Gee whiz, I could find one. It's so nice in paradise, I hope I'm not his decoy. Having love for God knows how much I love that better star. Angels sing of the love I bring. I hope our love will grow and grow. Gee whiz, I love again. Gee whiz, my, my, oh my. There are things we could do, I could say I love you, but all I can say is, gee whiz.
On August 12th, I've been told by the executive director there, she has a very good chance. We're going to be back, we'll be selling ads like we did last year. I also want to give you one more report. Last month, we had 1,925 entries into the senior center. Now, some of those are duplications, because some people come every day, but I just want to jump in now, that's close to 2,000, and different every month, but the numbers are high, that's how many people that the senior center assisted and fed and entertained and bought services to last month. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, Polly Manning was our fourth contestant, and she's just entered the building.
Start with our council member reports. We started out with Mr. London.
Just real quick, just want to mention a few things. Good evening, everyone. Great, great song, great voice, too. Really enjoyed that. I will be conducting my annual back-to-school backpack giveaway, annual back-to-school rally, where I'll be providing backpacks to the kids in the Irondale area. Even though it may be in District Five, I have not yet determined exactly where I will have the back-to-school rally, but I will be giving out backpacks again to the kids, and the date has yet to be determined. So, next council meeting, I should have more information to give you, but just wanted to put that out there. Next, I've been receiving a lot of calls in reference to the one-day garbage pickup. I'm asking the council, I would like to review this change in our ordinance within three to six months, just to see if it's working in the city and, of course, in our citizens' favor. I don't know if y'all guys have gotten some calls, but, you know, always, you know, when we implement certain policies and procedures, it's always good to go back and review to make sure it's doing what it's supposed to do. So I will be bringing this up again, just so we can review it. I know the mayor did mention that, something about possible cost savings for us during our new garbage pickup. Still, I would like to make sure we're reviewing and seeing what it's doing. Next, Mayor, I just wanted to address something with you. I know there's a lot of issues that's going on in our fire department. I've been getting a lot of calls, not really from the, from the Irondale area, because I'm involved with a lot of people outside of Irondale. I think it's something you really need to look into, without going into detail. We really need to address those issues. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate Janice Jackson for winning our Miss Senior Irondale contest, and Lonnie Montgomery for Miss Congeniality. And congratulate all the contestants, every one of them was a winner. I think they did a real good job, a great job. The senior center is having a fishing and picnic at Oak Mountain State Park on June 16th, so if you would like to go get some casting in or fishing.
It's July.
Huh?
It's July.
July, July, excuse me.
We already went on that trip, and it was very successful.
Okay.
Caught a lot of fish, and some people were more proud of their fish than others.
Oh, I see. Bill, I'll tell somebody you caught.
Oh, boy. Bet you wouldn't have thought it was a twin counter. Go to the Facebook page and look at that video, and you'll laugh.
All right, and then I'll go to the library. I'd like everybody to take a few minutes to check out the library's calendar for this month of July. It's on their website. But one thing I'd like to mention is movies. They're having movies every Tuesday at 1:00 in the afternoon, and again at 5:00 p.m. So bring the kids in the afternoon at 1:00, and parents can come back with them at 5:00 and enjoy a good movie. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Spivey?
Good evening. A couple of things. First two are semi-related. As far as the historical society goes, looking at having a meeting on the 10th at 6:30 at the Public Library here in Irondale in the back room. So we'll talk about a few things, a few goals, and a few ongoing things that we're trying to tackle. To piggyback on that, one thing we'll also talk about at that meeting is Mount Hebrewan Church, 2400 Second Avenue South. On July 16th, they're having their 126-year dedication, and there's going to be a historical plaque unveiling. The time for that celebration is at 3:30. So just trying to get the community out, kind of wrap our arms around the church, show them that they're a huge part of the community, and just appreciate the time that they've been ministering to the community. So once again, that dedication is July the 16th at 3:30, 2400 Second Avenue South, just over here in the bend. An update on Housing and Abatement Board. It's moving houses through the abatement process to recognize them as needing work and needing to be torn down. Takes a very, very long time. There were some notes that went out to the owners of a lot of these houses. Five of them were put on the docket to be possibly torn down. Of those five, 500 Plaza, this house is currently being renovated, so that's a good thing. Somebody took something that was possibly going to be torn down and is actually improving on it. The 2207 Second Avenue South, the owner will demolish the home in 60 days, so that's great that the owner's doing that, or not having paid money to do that, taking charge of that themselves. 2200 Fourth Avenue South, the house is currently being renovated by the owner, another good thing. 2305 First Avenue South, the governing body will need to make determination whether or not the structure is unsafe, so that will be coming to us as far as whether we need to move on tearing that house down. So I think I got all of them. So just a little update, Housing and Abatement Board is moving forward with getting some upstairs, unsafe structures taken care of. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, y'all sound like y'all, just been working all day. But it's a beautiful day to be here today. I'm excited to serve you as your council person, excited to be part of this council. Well, a couple of things, real quick. The KJ McDaniel basketball camp last week was a success. Over 70 kids came out for two days, and we had a great, great time. And we're so excited that he came back. He didn't have to, he could have went anywhere he wanted to go, but he came back to Irondale, Shades Valley High School, and put on a camp for the young folks here in Irondale. So we're so excited by KJ, so proud of, so proud of him. Jay Stewart, author. I just want to say how proud we are of you, of you too. You're a Shades Valley alumni, and we're so excited that.
JCI.
Well, Shades Valley, Irondale, JCI, I'm sorry. JCI alumni, it's two different. JCI alumni, we're so proud of you from Irondale. You represent us very well. We thank you for what you do, and just let you know that anything that we can do as council, let's know. We're proud of it. It's not about athletics, it's about everything, about how young folks are doing. So we're proud of what you, what you've been doing, so we thank you for that. We had a great parks meeting, I think the council that was here a couple weeks ago, had a fantastic parks meeting. Got some notes, and thank you, Lassie, for providing all those notes. Lassie started taking notes, I put my hand down, and she did some great, great notes taken. So I have those, I've been getting those to you guys, and kind of look over those as we move forward. Councilman Wilson, glad you brought the book back, because the same group that's been here the last three years, the J Club, Jacksburg State Football guys, you know, free football camp, also doing book drive. So it may be something we'll talk about, and we could maybe go in with those guys and do it together. They want to do theirs, all good, good. So we'll talk, we'll talk and see, and see how we do that, if we do that. And last thing, I got a comment, I'll let you do that.
Yep. I was approached by John Sean, he's a resident of Rock Ridge, and also in the city.
The change club.
And they wanted to, the Pocket Park group there at Rock Ridge, in Sunny Rock, they wanted, their neighborhood association wanted to get together, and on Saturday, July 29th, at 3:00, they wanted to get out there and just cook some hot dogs, invite people to come over. And so he asked if the police department would be interested in participating, and I told him we certainly would. So we will be there, I'll have the detective there, the beat officer, myself, and just to meet people, to come up and speak with you about issues you may be having in your neighborhood or whatever, just kind of a community meeting and greet. So we'll be a part of that at 3:00 on Saturday, the 29th, in Rock Ridge neighborhood.
Thanks. Thanks.
29.
29, Saturday, 29, 3:00.
Just real quickly, while we're on the subject of our local author, Ms. Stewart, she will be having a book signing, presentation at the library on 14th, at, I think that starts 11:00 a.m. So please go by and support local talent. Just real quickly, thank Tella Shoemaker for setting up a meeting, involved getting with three very nice ladies from the Community Foundation of Greater Birmingham. Organization I had not heard of before, but it does present some definite opportunities for us to look at grant money in the long term. They have criteria that narrow it down to some extent, but that money is there, and it was almost like they were begging us to participate. So we hope to follow up on that and be able to get something out of it. Again, thank Tella for setting that meeting up and making sure we went forward. Talking to Mr. Stewart before the meeting, we've only had two resumes for two slots on the CBA. As we have done before, when we've not had an out point of resumes, we've extended the deadline by a week or two to give a chance for some other people to get in, and I really think we need to do that, so we do have choices, not just have two people step in because they're the only ones that put in resumes. So if there's concurrence with the rest of the council, we pick a date, James, that would suit your calendar, about two weeks, and we put that out. And again, there are two positions open, so July 18th, that would be the next deadline. And hopefully, please, spread this around in the community. We need some people to step up to the plate, because we would like to have a chance to be able to interview people and make the best choice for the next four-year period, well, actually, it'll be the remainder of the terms, the 200 individuals, which expired back in March. And in Luncheon, at Senior Activities Center on the 3rd of July, very well attended, food was very good, everyone was very hospitable. You learn a lot by sitting there and listening to people in my age group talk, so it was a great experience for me, and thank y'all for having me, I enjoyed it, it was very nice. Just, other than that, nothing else for this evening. Go on to reports of boards and non-council committees. Never pass up an opportunity.
That's right. Hi, guys. Hi, my name's Tella Shoemaker. I'm executive director of Chamber of Commerce of Greater Irondale, and I'd like to invite you all to come to our next meeting. It's going to be this Thursday at Pine Tree Country Club, from 11:30 until 1:00, and our speaker will be the Community Foundation of Greater Birmingham. Gus, her, Hughes will be a speaker, and we will also have one or two other people. So if you are a part of a nonprofit, or it's a wonderful opportunity to learn how they can give your grant money, so I hope you will come. And also remember, we've got our cornhole fundraising tournament coming up in August, and all the cool people will be there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now time to approve the agenda. We will have a fifth item added to tonight's agenda, and that is resolve that Resolution 2017 R 79 authorizes the mayor to execute a service agreement with Alcom Wireless Incorporated for the dispatcher office in the amount of $23,905.
May I make a correction there? That should be Resolution 2017 R 80. I said, may I make a correction there? That should be Resolution 2017 R 80. May I make a motion that is going to be approved with addition of item number five?
I have a quote here that the chief gave to me. The reason that it was added is because the contract needed to be signed before July 15th. If it's signed after the 15th, there will be a $2,800 late charge. Yes, this is a maintenance agreement for the equipment at the dispatcher's office, so it's customary, and it's something that would approve every year.
I think the chief indicated this was about the same amount as last year. It does come out in the 9/11 fund, it's in the budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now it's time for you public comments on agenda items, would you please? And if you're coming forward, please fill out the paper where you come forward and hand it to Mr. Stewart. All right? If there's no comments, we'll move right into new business.
I'll make a motion that, uh, is gonna be approved with addition of item number five.
I have a quote here that the chief gave to me. Uh, the reason that it was added is because the contract needed to be signed before July fifteenth. If it's signed after the fifteenth, there will be a twenty-eight hundred dollar late charge.
Yes.
Yes, this is a maintenance agreement for the, um, equipment in your dispatcher office, so it's, it's customary. It's something that would approve every year.
I think the chief indicated this was about the same amount as last year, it does come out of the nine one one fund, it's in the budget.
Read the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now it's time for you public comments on agenda items only, please. And if you're coming forward, please go out to the paper where you come forward and hand it to Mr. Stewart. Alright, if there's no comments, we'll move right into new business. Uh, first item is resolved, the Resolution twenty seventeen R seventy-six approves the twenty fifteen dash twenty sixteen City of Irondale Financial Audit. Uh, mayor, any additional comments? We basically are just, uh, accepting the audit, we can make no changes or any.
That's correct, feel free to vote to receive the audit.
And I just need a motion on that, second.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty seventeen R seventy-six be approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second item resolved, the Resolution twenty seventeen R seventy-seven, purchase of utility easement for Brookview Resilient Church in an amount not to exceed three hundred dollars. This is additional, uh, right of way needed to complete some of the work going to the Mercedes, uh, location. You'll have a motion on that item.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty seventeen R seventy-seven be approved?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Third item resolved, the Resolution twenty seventeen R seventy-eight, change of council meeting from Tuesday, August the fifteenth, this is August the fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, to Thursday, August the seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. This is related to the fact that that Tuesday will be a senate race, so it will be voting on that day.
Discussion, uh, Councilman Wilson was in earlier to see if that date works for him.
If not, I'm sure y'all have a board, so. I make a, um, a motion that Resolution twenty seventeen dash R dash seventy-eight changes the council meeting from Tuesday, August the fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, to August seventeenth, twenty, uh, fifteen, seventeen, to August the seventeenth, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fourth item resolved, the Resolution twenty seventeen R, uh, R seven, R seventy-nine, authorizes the police department to purchase twenty bulletproof vests in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. This is coming out of seizure money, uh, or we should, that's a better way to put it rather than say drug money. Thank you, this is to replace vests that increase the end of their useful life and is part of a planned replacement that's being done over a period of years.
I make a motion, twenty seventeen, question?
Uh, what do we do with the old ones?
We have in the past, maybe donated them, some police departments can't afford vests.
Okay.
And we, sometimes we'll take some out of the range, just do a quick wear test on.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Do I have a motion?
Motion twenty seventeen R eighty, do you move?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Whoa, 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 you, you asked for the R eight, you didn't move to the seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did I say eight?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item is resolved, the Resolution twenty seventeen R eighty, authorizes the mayor to execute a service agreement with Alcom Wireless Inc. for the dispatcher office in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars with this money coming out of the nine one one fund in the budget.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty seventeen R dash eighty in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and five be passed?
Thirty seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. And do we now have any public comments on anything other than agenda items?
Yes.
Ma'am, if you'll get the paperwork in the back, please, and come forward to the mic, we appreciate it. Thank you. Pass that to Mr. Stewart here, thank you very much.
Number one?
Good evening.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, um, I do enjoy the trash dump, the people coming out twice a week, they do an excellent job. At first, I thought it was them who do an excellent job in this hallway, but I've seen them in other places and everywhere I've seen them working, they do an excellent job. They, uh, take pride in their work, if they drop something, they pick it up. So, uh, I just wanna, you know, get that out. Okay, so, um, I want to speak in reference to this idea on the move. You know, destroying my property. Fifteen hundred month old road. This came up, um, two and a half years or so, when everybody was, you know, wanting to vote on it. I just wanted my property not to be flooded. I know that might sound, you know, funny to everybody. That was my only request. Other people had various issues, you know, but I'm thinking, I'm like a hundred feet from this property. And so, everybody said, approve, approve, approve. I'm like, oh, well, what happened to my concern? So I'm like, okay, well, maybe they got this under control. So I'm just gonna sit back and watch and see what happens. I apologize, Mayor. You wasn't being on the next, so you come in on this house. Uh, so everybody said, okay, and went on with it. And, uh, soon as all the trees got, you know, closed and everything, soon as it rained, straight to my house. So, I have, you know, some pictures printed up because the ones of you all that's been here know this is not new. So I'm just gonna, uh, pass each one. Now this is the seventh flood, the first flood and the second flood.
Could you give us, could you give us a, this is next, Monteval Park.
Yeah, to the new home.
The title home.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you are in relation to.
Is this your workout construction?
The workout project?
Yeah.
It's a hundred feet over to the left. Stand in front of this house right here.
Uh-huh.
It's a hundred, about a hundred feet over to the left.
Uh, well, that would be telling me where it's happening. And where in relation to the new homes are you?
I was gonna say, you don't have to say it. Is this you in the back there?
No.
Okay.
That's the neighbors that's behind. Now, in that picture there, you can't see my house.
Okay.
That's the neighbor's house in the back.
Are you on the same side of Monteval as the new construction?
Yes.
Alright, and how, uh, how many houses between you and the new construction?
It's no house, it's a, it's a, it's a dead wood. That house that you see in the back, there's another house behind to the, to the left and there's the one over to the right. And so, that's the first, you know, this, this first page right here, that was the first flood. And everybody runs over and, you know, everybody look, everybody's concerned. Okay, so they dug this gray big cradle from one end of the block to the other, five hundred feet, you know, delta right, fifty feet deep, whatever. And went ahead building. Well, what was happening with that was the water was running in this big cradle.
Ms. Stewart, let me, for the sake of the times, because we do have a three-minute limit.
Okay.
What I would appreciate, this is really something we need to turn over to the mayor and Public Works and follow up with High Price I- powers.
Yes.
If you don't mind, if you would get with him after the meeting to make sure he knows all the particulars.
Okay.
And that would be on his plate to follow up and make sure there's some follow-up with you. And we've got your contact information here on your sheet, right? Okay, now I tried to cut you off, it's just a forsaken, but, uh, he's the person that will follow up on that and then whatever we need to do as a council will hopefully come back to us if we can be of any use on the other end of it because basically we would have to maybe back up automatically done.
Okay, and I, I just wanna give you, this is the weekend.
Okay, please, thank you very much.
Also, David is your council person.
Okay.
Spotty, Spotty.
And thank you very much for your attention.
Alright.
Please have a question?
Again, but this for the third time, this, this not the first time.
Is this recent stuff right here, is this?
Yes, that just happened over the weekend.
Okay, so you got your name on it? Cause I know they just redug that, um, they've been spending some time over in that, in that, uh, reclamation pond, they've been kind of.
It's not working.
It's not working, fair enough.
Not working.
And Council Spotty, we have a recommendation?
Thank you.
Are there any more comments from the audience?
It's not working.
Thank you.
Uh, not comments, but I just wanted to make an announcement. Uh, holiday garden is scheduled for July the twenty-second to have a family fun day. And what we have in mind is for people to come and bring their entire family and we're gonna have some activities for everybody. Something real simple, but it'll be a chance for us to get to know each other and for, uh, for us to just have fun together. It's gonna be pretty simple, but I think we need to get to know who's in our neighborhood. And I don't, I can't think of any other form that actually does that. And so we're gonna start with a fun day. It's gonna be July the twenty-second from ten to two thirty, so you can come have some fun, eat some food and have some more fun and then go home. So I do want to invite you out, you'll start to get some flyers about it, but I wanted to announce that. The other thing, I'm gonna invite you out, we were talking about season, I wanna invite you out to the Bible study that's on Friday. We have a Bible study going on, uh, at ten, ten thirty on Friday, we're studying the Book of James. So we want you to invite you out, if you don't have something to do and you wanna study the Word of God on James, come out to the senior center at two thirty on Friday.
It's the same day yesterday.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't say where, Beacon Park, in Beacon Park.
Any additional comments?
Yeah.
If not, do I have a motion?
There's something, yeah.
One more? Okay, wait one more.
Thank you. I am there, indeed, and. Thank you for this opportunity. You know, I feel like shouting tonight. One of my old favorite songs, they give glory to God, saints. Give glory to God. We come to piggyback on what our, uh, councilman said tonight. Number two?
Spotty.
Um, and we got an invitation to each of you, I'm gonna read one, but it's, it's saying to each of you. Mount Hebron Missionary Baptist Church, twenty-four hundred Second Avenue South, Irondale, Alabama. Reverend Dr. David J. Hump, senior pastor. Dear councilman, leader, entire citizen, greetings in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. As we embark upon the one hundred twenty-six church anniversary, an annual homecoming celebration of the Mount Hebron Missionary Baptist Church, we are blessed and endowed with a historical landmark commemoration. You have played a pivotal role in the history of this great church. We extend this invitation to you for this momentous occasion. This joyous occasion is on July sixteenth, twenty seventeen, beginning at nine thirty A.M. for Sunday school and the historical landmark celebration is commenced at the three thirty hour. To God be the glory for the things he has done, looking forward to the fellowship. Yours in Christ, Reverend Dr. David J. Hump, senior, and the Mount Hebron Missionary Baptist Church Anniversary Committee. I want to leave this committee with, for, before you all to get a personal as well as a public invitation. And also we do have flyers that we're circulating throughout our community. And then on the second Sunday, we're having a pre-anniversary celebration of which, the theme is giving that old-time religion. So we're dressing in the bunnies and the overalls and we even have the old-time food. Like potato salad and sweet potatoes, okra and peas and knick bones. So you all are invited as this coming Sunday for the pre-anniversary. And again, thank you, in the words of my pastor, he always say he is high, you know, happy, peacock proud and elephant elated for this occasion. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you so much. Did I miss anyone else in the audience? Is that it? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second. Ladies? Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming.